Next presentation we have is a strategic redevelopment plan with SandTech, but we're going to start with Administrator Landrum.
I just, uh, thank you just to set this up. We had a busy, have had a busy week this week. Yesterday, we started at the lodge last night with a presentation from six to eight. The attendance was significantly down. I did see some Facebook posts that people said, "We're still following it. We were unable to come, but keep posting everything to Facebook. We're watching." So, very important. So, we will be, of course, videotaping this and getting this out. Today, we spent a lot of time in a planning process of listening, after listening to everybody, of actually starting to put pieces of the puzzle to see what fits, what's possible. Steve Kearney is with SandTech. He is going to tonight bring the board and bring the public and citizens all up to date from the beginning to where we got some significant things we were waiting on. We still have to go through a lot of data, but there are, you know, part of this piece is not just fancy drawings, but it's doing the research behind how much residential can it support? How much, what's the market doing? What can the market rate support for businesses? So, those pieces have initially been drafted and, and we're going to be diving into deeper numbers. I will say this, we are very happy with what we're seeing. We're not expecting to see things, other communities that have interstates run through them, no. But we, we were surprised pleasantly with what we're seeing, and it gives us the opportunity to, to move ahead in a very positive manner that what we thought, what we were thinking, the numbers are showing that it is possible. So, very good news right off the bat. So, with, with we do, I just want to state, we got this for people to watch, but also we'll be putting everything on our website and as much as we can on Facebook as well. Tomorrow night, and I just want to remind everybody, tomorrow night, we will be having an open house. It is a change of venue. It is at the Senior Center. So, at the Senior Center, we will be having a shorter presentation and an open house that actually reflects all the input that we have received and the statistics that we have received and the showing you more of 3D modeling. You'll see a little bit tonight of some of it, but starting to put the pieces and getting the public reaction to it and more suggestions where possible. We also had the Oversight Committee meeting today, getting them further engaged, and it was very pleasant that we just sent them, I mean, I don't know, 20, 50 pages on one of them was a, one of the pieces of things that we sent them, and some of them had read every bit of it and had highlights done, and we were like, "Wow, are you kidding?" So, they're very engaged, so we're very pleased with that. So, just keep us in mind, tomorrow night, six o'clock, Senior Center. Other than that, I'm going to turn this over to Steve, and we'll go through our presentation here.
Great. Thank you very much, Pete. That was a perfect introduction. As I said last night, and I'll say again tonight, this is a highly moving part of the planning process. We are quickly working with the material that's coming in, and we're using that to base the decisions that you'll begin to see tonight and that the community is seeing over the course of this week. And again, I'll explain it throughout this presentation, and I thank everyone for their patience of seeing some of this again, who have, again, been part of this from the beginning and are coming to all of the meetings. So, that, to us, is exciting. It means the community really supports it. So, next slide. You know, really, what I want to work through tonight is the, you know, the project update, you know, let everyone know where we're at in the process. The vision statement and guiding principles, which I'll explain, are built on what we learned from the community in April, and it is a synthesis of the community's individual visions. We'll walk through those. They, I will dive into the residential market analysis because I think that's important to understand. It's a strong component of what can drive some of the revitalization efforts, and I think it's important to understand each of those pieces. And then, we'll start to walk into really the, the placemaking, which is what we're speaking about today in this week and developing the, the main street, the, the walkable environment, the, the downtown, if you will, of Delhi Township, the place that it was and how we can bring it back into. And that's, that's the push we're on right now, the, or the design, really, the design part of this process, but based on the market analysis. And, you know, again, I'll just end with a quick review of what to expect tomorrow night, although Pete has already just covered some of that, so we're good. Next slide. You're really just looking at where we're at in the process. Click once. You know, we, we are, you know, we just started in April. It is now, you know, early June, but what's important is much of the analysis, the existing conditions work is behind us. We have all the draft materials. We got great input from the Oversight Committee today. We will be finalizing those. But importantly, if you note, the planned development Task Four and soon-to-be Task Five, not far away, about a month away, this is the real work that we will be pulling together, the plan, product plan development. We will take the analysis, churn it into a conceptual master plan with specific projects. We will test those, and I'll get into some of that information as we go into these slides. Next. You know, we have already been involved with the community, two major events. This is the biggest, the kickoff with 145-plus. Twenty, we haven't hit the 25 stakeholder interviews, but we're getting there and will continue throughout this. We're holding them by phone and in person. We say to every time we're speaking to individuals, if you know other stakeholders you think we should be reaching out to, let us know. A big part of this process is to identify entities, individuals, who can be part of the implementation process, and that's critical to a successful planning effort. We will come back with the development scenarios as we move from a framework. We'll come into specific conceptual redevelopments that will be costed out to prove developer feasibility and which will attract developers, which is what we're, our goal is to attain with this project, and that will be presented in August and will again be a community event. And then, we come back in September really with a draft plan that will hopefully be adopted officially in October. So, this is a seven-month process, as we've explained, and seven months goes very fast in the planning world. So, next slide. Again, just looking at who we've already met with, it's been great. I mean, the input has been huge. It is helping us understand what's happening. When you read the market memo from WZHA, much of the information comes from the experts within the community, and then it's tested through national data and frankly, WZHA's expertise on this, and it is, it's strong and been very helpful. So, I mean, this is truly from the community itself to the stakeholders is being built together. The, you know, goals for next month, I just wanted to keep this in here just because to give a sense, this was actually for the Oversight Committee, to help them understand that they'll be busy as well, but it's a, just so we know, you know, we will be, and expectations of where we'll be at, you know, we will finish these draft reports that everyone will be reviewing right now. They will get up onto the website soon. We want to take this rough-and-tumble, sketchy, messy development framework we're working on right now and really refine it into what's realistic and works within the existing conditions, the street network, et cetera, the property owners. You know, we want to get quickly into these catalytic developments. This is a component of our scope where we will develop these and we will, you know, create performance, you know, operating performance to prove viability. That all starts within next June and July, and really an outline for the plan document for the direct team to review and probably an example part of the plan itself, again, just to move this forward. Just quickly, this was presented last night, the strengths and the challenges. I, this was directly from the community, and it's just important to note, you know, without a doubt, I mean, it is, I don't have to read the list, you know, Delhi Park, you know, the fact that this is such a family-friendly na, community, the values, these are all so critical. Every single person, every table came up with these, and these are the combined strengths from the community. And it's just, it is great. I mean, the committed to local success. Kroger, it sounds silly to list a grocery store as a strength, but to us, I mean, having a grocery store like Kroger of that quality and the investment being put into it, it's indicative of a strong market, and to us, that means a strong market. We can make things happen. So, it's great that the community's saying this as well. Mount St. Joe's, of course. Just to quickly hit the other side of this, this isn't even the entire list of challenges. So, you know, this is why we do a community effort. We have to bring this out. We have to acknowledge what the issues are. And again, strip centers, lack of identity, not age-friendly, these are issues that we're hearing from the community, and all get incorporated into the plan process. The, you know, there are some, you know, concerns. I think, on the one hand, we heard some safety concerns. On the other hand, I'm proud to say nearly universally within the commercial area where everyone traditionally goes shops, considers a shared space, safety was not an issue with anyone we spoke to. That speaks volumes to what we've got here. So, again, we see the challenges. We have to address the challenges, but they are, they can be addressed, and the strengths really are going to help pull this through. Next. Draft vision statement. I will read this because we're on the record, and this is important. I want the community and everyone watching this to hear this, especially if they can't see. So, I will, you know, "Delhi Pike is thriving and is, again, the center of township life. Like Delhi itself, the Pike is safe and welcoming to all. It represents the culmination of longstanding community goals for a great array of choices for shopping, dining, and entertainment. Places for families of all ages to gather, better connections by car, foot, bike, and transit, expanded housing options that serve young and old, improved parks and public spaces, increased employment opportunities, and opportunities to walk within a main street environment to meet friends. The Pike has emerged as a uniquely 25, 21st century village center, a source of pride for our community and one of the reasons why new and returning residents come home to Delhi Township." Now, let me repeat, this is a, a synthesis of over 130 vision statements from the community. Commonalities that you see in that are in fact, you know, the idea of stressing that, you know, the importance of family to Delhi Township, the idea that residents, children grow up, come home, and that's something that was both a source of pride and a source of concern that we heard from the community. So, those are how and why we create this vision statement, and we tweak it a little bit to cover some of the other overarching goals. So, this is something, it's a draft. We welcome more input. This is not complete until we have given the community a chance to really weigh in on this, so this could likely change. We always like to have core principles to a planning effort because when a developer comes in and proposes a project, we want to have, we want to make sure that that development hits the principles of this plan effort. So, again, and I'll walk it through from that perspective on the, the five principles that we have. Support community. So, again, how is a pro, development project going to support the community? How is it going to add to a sense of place? How is it going to possibly create an environment, a public environment, that again, will attract community, will provide a place for the community to be? What are the qualities of that development that support community? Next. Build economic value. This has a multitude of different objectives, and we'll get to them, but you know, essentially, you know, Delhi Pike was the place, that was where people went and shopped. It created the tax revenue. How can that come back? How is your project going to help increase the economic value within this area? How is your development possibly going to create spaces for entrepreneurs? You know, spaces where individuals can work within here? How is that going to help? How is your development going to create jobs that residents would have access to? Those are, you know, how can we enhance economic value? Next slide. Quality of life. This is, you know, quality of life, we talk about in different plans, but in the terms of what we heard and learned from the community and the stakeholders is, you know, we've got, you know, still a fairly strong commercial area, but there are vacancies here. It doesn't have the level that it once had, but we also heard across the board from our stakeholders in the community that there are some safety concerns in different parts of the Pike and within the surrounding area. And if you look at the income debt and demographics, you know, in parts of this, they are actually very strong. You're going to see in a few minutes on the market, but if you are to slice or look at certain sections within our study area, they are not as strong. And again, there are health issues. There are concerns related to drug use that are issues that we're learning about that we will address within this plan. And so, as much as this may be about creating a place that we can all share, it's also about coming up with some strategies, health and wellness-related, creating better access to health that could be a real benefit to the community. So, again, this is a quality of life. This could relate to a type of development such as medical use development within here, and again, immediately addressing this principle. Next. Connectivity. If we've heard it once, we've heard it twice, it's not the only place we want to connect to, but the Mount and St. Joseph's University and how the students want to be here and how can we make it easier for them to get here to create part of the vibrancy that will make this, you know, truly a shared space. So, how do we connect to the Mount? How do we connect to the surrounding neighborhoods? There are sidewalk issues. There's other waves. We learned, we learned throughout this, that in some situations, you know, we think it's easy to get to, and we hear that there's major barriers, be it a creek, be it a lack of sidewalks. So, we need to understand how we can actually, you know, connect the residents to this area that we're working on. Next. Finally, every plan, again, we, we want to include something about sustainability, but we're serious about that, and what do we mean and how are we really addressing it? How is a development project going to address sustainability? How is it going to improve stormwater issues? How is it going to enhance the ecosystem or the environment around? How is a development going to impact Cincinnati, surrounding neighborhoods? All of those are issues that I think we can address, and we want to get into those. And again, as a principle for this, how are new projects going to address this issue? Next. So, again, we're now going in, you know, we've done all the existing conditions. I want to move fairly quickly into the residential market analysis, but you know, next slide. You know, it's important, you know, we have the demographic push. This was a larger part of the presentation last night. It was a part of the kickoff, and I welcome everyone to, to go back and look at these presentations. You know, we often discuss, it's an exciting opportunity that's happening right now. There are demographic changes within the country, and areas like Delhi with immediate adjacency to emerging jobs in Cincinnati can benefit, and types of development are occurring that haven't occurred in 15, 20 years, probably longer in some ways. But so, there are new opportunities, and you know, just looking at this slide, you know, we are seeing and what we believe in is being proven true with the market work, you know, with the demographic shifts, you know, there are probably new housing market opportunities that we can look at, and those housing market opportunities create the mixed-use opportunities, the commercial, the increased number of households within a smaller area where you can walk to, create new types of housing choices, and, and I'm sorry, new types of retail choices that will begin to fill the spaces that we're working with when we're talking about mixed use. And again, it's being pushed by this demographic shift, but the benefits come out on the commercial side as well. Next slide. Just a couple, you know, again, looking, pulling back out a bit, America is in fact growing, and you know, part of that growth is creating a much more diverse country, and we always, you know, believe in and focus on the fact that more diverse settings, more diverse places are actually more attractive to everyone, and it's something that we often talk about, and diversity to us is everything. It is, it's not just race, it's different ages, it is different socioeconomic groups. It's, it's the wide span, because again, those are the places that become more exciting and ultimately more attractive places to be and to have fun, to play, to live, to work. Next slide. And again, you know, this, we always, you know, talk about, but it, it is true, and you know, this is, you know, this is to show you very simply how much, you know, demographics have shifted in our country. You know, when you talk about where growth came from, you know, over the last 20 years, it has been primarily in the 35 to 64-year-olds. This is, this is national. This is not Delhi. This is everywhere in our country. And go to the next, and then you hit one more time, and it'll be a fancy graphic. It switches. And again, 65 and older is by far and above the fastest-growing demographic in our country. This is the baby boomers, and they are, it's reshaping choices, and to us, again, that creates the opportunity. That's what we're looking at. Next slide. And it is creating the opportunity for new types of growth. Without, you know, repeating, it means that, you know, different choices, the, the market rate, the high-quality rental becomes a new option that both empty nesters and also millennials because of the recession, because of the difficulty in getting mortgages. These changes are relating to new market, new housing types coming up. The market in and of itself, I think anyone who drives around is seeing it in these new developments. It's being driven solely by the market, and that's something we want to capture. That's a, a specific goal of this planning effort. Next slide. And again, you know, the fact is just, you know, the, the growth opportunities right now that we're looking at are within the, the multi, the high-quality multifamily rental, you know, probably not within the sprawl. And as David Dixon more eloquently said last night, if you look at this, you know, model here, and it's really looking in other areas, that the growth opportunities are likely in, closer in neighborhoods with opportunities to have the density, and the residential lots here are smaller, you have more people, you have 60,000 people who are considered the market for our location. That's much larger than we anticipated. It's because of how Delhi traditionally grew, and it's part of the opportunity that we can build on, and that to us is exciting. Sprawl, two-plus, you know, five-acre, four-acre properties are not creating the, the market necessarily, and it's, it's a different place. It's probably not the opportunity, as much of an opportunity right now as what we're looking at. So, good news for Delhi. Next slide. So, again, you know, what have, we looked at that, the demographics, you know, that brings us into the market studies, which we've been mentioning, we got this week, we're building on. Next slide. Residential, we hire, we work with Zivram and Voc Associates as often as we can because they're, Lori Voc who leads it, you know, her reports are, are brought to the bank by developers, and, and we say that in the sense that when we talk about the tools we ultimately end up with and deliver to the township, the market, residential market report is a tool that developers can take to get financing, to build support for their case. It's something that the township holds and shares with, with anybody who comes in the door who's interested in. And, and again, developers who are here and listening, you know, as soon as this is revised over the next couple of weeks, there will be a final version out, and I would highly recommend anyone to pick this up and to look at it. It's important. But, you know, it different is it doesn't look at the existing residential conditions. It looks at mobility rates and who the future renter, homeowner may be, and it's done through IRS data and other different types of data and their own methodology to come up with if you are building this, this is the amount of market you can capture realistically within a five-year timeframe. Next slide. And, you know, what we ask these questions, because these are very helpful for us, and this is how Lori goes through her report, and I just wanted to highlight a few pieces of it, you know, what type of home are they looking for? This is a, you know, we, we're talking about the top, you know, really the top multifamily for rent, multifamily for sale, single-family attached for sale, because again, when you look at our study area, that is, that's what fits within our study area. We have single-family residential in our study area, and that, that's already there. And so, the, the properties that we'd be looking at, we're looking at the top three. You know, with that said, we're still, this report looks at the market, and obviously, you still have a strong single-family market out there. I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned last night. Next slide. But where are they coming from? And again, this I just find is very interesting. It's typically strong from the, the local area, but you are, you're very strong from the area, you know, base, essentially, Hamilton County and Delhi is, you know, 80%, more, more than 80% of the, the draw here. So, when everyone says, "Delhi residents come home," they do. And in fact, I even question the balance of the U.S., which is your true national draw of that near 10%. I wonder how many grew up here? That'd be interesting if you could actually figure that out. I'm not, I'm not sure about that, but the fact is, you are attracting from across. What's interesting for us is typically when we're, now we're looking more into what can we build, and we're focused more on the multifamily and the townhomes, this usually is split more equally between empty nesters, retirees, and the younger singles and couples, and you know, younger singles and couples are going to drive the market here, and it's, it's helpful. It's good. It's more, it, it can really, you know, we can not only understand it, we can think about the retail options, et cetera. With that said, I mean, this is, you still have empty nesters, retirees, and you still have traditional and non-traditional families will be a part, but you know, this is how we begin to understand who is coming. Next slide. Another interesting piece, and just Pete click once, the, when we're looking at how much they can afford to pay for rent, this is, this number, we have not gotten into the next step, but the fact that, you know, 60% can pay up to, you know, 1,250, 750 to 1,250, those likely at the 1,000 to 1,250, and even that, you know, 8, 900, you know, with that amount, that begins to probably demonstrate that development can occur and will occur, and it's a, we have to prove that a developer will get roughly, let's say, a 6% return on investment, and to do that, and considering the prices of some of these properties, they have to charge a certain level of rent. Now, you know, we know that rents in the lower part of our study area are, are as low as 400, you know, and $500 a month. You know, this is entirely different likely product. I mean, a real, brand-new, high-end, market-rate housing, and the fact is, we've, we've got a, a strong part of the market that can pay these rents, and that, that's a very important fact to this. That will, you'll want to look at that and then see the additional work on how the pricing works out on some of the development scenarios. Next slide. So, again, what this, what this means in the next five years, 350 units of housing. If you look out over 10 years, which in a development standpoint, a revitalization of this effort, it is likely a 10-year effort, you're basically at 600. Again, we, we're estimating more when we get to the 10-year real estate. It's hard to see that far, but with that said, what's interesting is in the actual study area, you actually, you have about 600 units of housing right now. So, just as a way to think about it, the, you know, within five years, you could, you build more than half of what's there already, and possibly within 10 years, you're building up in, in a different models to support the single-family. You know, you're, you're really increasing the density, and you're creating the opportunity for retail to thrive again within this area, and that, that's, this is what we're trying to get to. That's the, that's the goal of this planning. Next slide. For fun, I wanted to look, this I added today because somebody, a woman from the meeting last night asked me, "Who are these young people? I don't really see, I don't know who they are. Why aren't they, why aren't the young people just moving to Cincinnati to over the Rhine?" And so, I went into the report, and this is one snippet of it, but I wanted to pull out the very, to show you how clearly we slice and dice the psychographics of the person who would be interested in living within this area. And you've got some entrepreneurs and E-types and VIPs and fast-track professionals, and I should say that in appendices to these reports, we have a very clear description of who those individuals are, but you, you know, you're hitting upscale suburban couples. You're hitting, you know, roughly suburban achievers as some of the large demographics along with the urban achievers. You know, there are a lot of people who will choose not to live in a downtown setting. They don't like the lack of access to a grocery store, to some of the other amenities that they grew up with, and so, when somebody says, "Who are they?", you know, this is the kind of report that we're, we created. We can tell you exactly who they are and, and who we want to design for and build for, and that's what we're trying to do. Next slide. And again, what just came out is the market summary. I encourage everyone to read, and we'll get more, we'll pull more of this in the presentation, but the fact is, you know, we're looking at the opportunity for 60,000 square feet of medical use. We are talking about the fact that because of the traffic going to Kroger, we can support smaller stores, shoe stores, there will be smaller coffee shops, exactly the type of retail we'd be looking for, and I would say exactly the type of retail that we heard from the very first event where, you know, there are no dry cleaners here, there's no floors here, there's no butcher here. The, you know, we actually think in our, you know, the retail, the strength of the market, if we can do it the right way, we actually have the opportunity to get that, and that's what, again, more exciting information, I encourage everyone to read, the WZHA summary. Next. We, last night, we showed just some examples, you know, what can this begin to look like? And we go quickly because I want to get into what we're starting to think more realistically. What important thing is we are talking about different scale and different opportunities. This, I just want to pause because we always show modern, traditional. We like to get a sense, take a temperature of the community, and this one. So, for everyone watching, the, the traditional, I think this is a great development. It shows a type of, you know, material and quality that, you know, truly appealed, and tradition, and I, I just think, you know, it's great, and this is an environment, this is a street, be it a block or two blocks, that you would truly enjoy walking down, and that's, if we can get one image, we're thinking something like this. Next slide. And do it through, you know, we will design for all townhouses. Next slide. So, what we are doing now, again, we've gone into the existing conditions. We're going to zip through these slides to get to our work from yesterday and today, but what we are charged with, we know what we can get to, so now we have to identify the right sites, and this is what's going to happen over the next five and then likely to 10 years, and we have to, and we'll work very hard with everyone, with Pete, Catherine, with Tom, and everyone who's helping us, the Oversight Committee, to really make sure we're hitting the right properties. You know, and it's really, you know, Sarah Woodworth will help us figure out, you know, how will the value shape the strategies? Some of these properties are expensive. Adjacent to Kroger is an expensive property. We need to figure out if we, if our rents can support that type of development, and I just want to state right now, one big thing we'll be doing, and we'll be doing it next week, is now that we're working on our conceptual development ideas and scenarios, and there'll be multiple ones, it requires us to call all of these property owners, and again, our goal here is to understand how we can create the environment that we're charged with, and at the same time, you know, create an environment that ultimately increases the value of these properties. It's increasing the level of use and ultimately the value. And so, that'll be our charge, our conversation, and we'll work with, to get the names of all the property owners and who we should call, because I'd much rather tell them that that's we should call. Because I'd much rather tell them that that's what we're trying to do as opposed to them seeing an image in a paper of what we've drawn and come to a different conclusion. So again, we, you know, that's, this is, on the other side of this, you know, we're getting excited. We've seen areas that we think make sense. Next slide. We've done that by going through a very careful analysis of all of the different conditions. Land use, large holdings, clearly if we're dealing with one property owner, there's probably a likelier chance of success. Property value, this is interesting. You know, some property values just are expensive. These orange colors and yellows are more expensive. That's going to impact some of our decisions. Next. And we, we lay it all on top of each other. And we try to figure out the best locations. And we've identified them really. Next slide. And if I could walk up, I would, but I'm on the speaker here. Site A with its proximity to Delhi Park, which was probably again, the number one strength, you know, voted by the community. And we agree. And probably not really utilized to the degree that it should be. It's hard to tell you right next to the park. And it's hard to tell you right next to the Pike when you're in the park, more so. And again, you know, with Kroger's right there driving so much traffic and being a true amenity to this community, we just think that if there's a place to start, it's a place to start there. Site B is, the Remke, it's just, it's a large site and may very well be the one where you start. One property owner, that could be a huge opportunity. I'll, I'll show you those as we go to the next slides. You know, Delfair, Site C. On first visit, second visit, you know, we would have said, yes, 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 definitely the opportunity. You know, in our discussions and how this shapes up, and this is all, you know, up for changing and will change over the next, you know, few weeks. But if we are successful at Site A, you know, maybe Delfair is a little bit later. Or maybe Delfair develops in its own way. And that, you know, again, talking about potential ideas of graduate student housing as something, has come up in a conversation. Maybe there are different opportunities that really will change this. But right now, we're beginning to look at Site A, Site B, B2 as a potential expansion. You know, if in fact, you know, this occurs, notice you've got some residential within that. Much of that's owned by one individual. Again, this is some of the research we've done, which helps us, you know, look at it this way. Next slide. So this is, you know, A. And this is a start. This is a phase one right here. And, and significant amount of development. Red is mixed use. Yellow's just plain housing. Hopefully I didn't just dump my water over. Okay. Something to emphasize on this, and it's important because these are our challenges. This is Erin, our designer in the back, has been working with David Dixon. And this, the purple is the parking, surface parking. Unless we get more positive numbers, which we could, I mean, they're, they're going in the right direction. But likely, we want to look at surface parking, all of this development. That is probably the scenario that we'll have. And we need to make sure we have enough. We need to understand how we, how and where we place the parking, that it works to create the environment. And also, and this is a conversation came up with the Oversight Committee, why we have an Oversight Committee. You know, how we do it in a way that also doesn't disturb the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhoods. So that's something we want to think about. Next slide. Now we're beginning to see the 3D model and how it might take shape. And to look at what we're beginning to understand, you know, on the north side of the Pike, look at Remke and look at the south side and look at how it traditionally developed. And that is really, you know, to me and why we start to look at it this way, this is, you know, about changing an environment. When we say urban, what we're saying is some more traditional grid work, streets that you can walk along as opposed to a suburban to the right, which is the large scale parking lots. And again, so that's, that's us. But we pulled out to show where the park is and, and what we can really, you know, create here. Next slide. And here's, you know, likely a level of development that we're talking about here. You know, it is fairly modest, but at the same time fairly ambitious. And it's three-story. We could likely go up to four-story. And you know, here is now off the Pike, you know, along this new perpendicular street we were just looking at. Next slide. Now going back, another question again, that came up with the community last night is how are we going to cross Delhi Pike? This is not an easy road to cross. And it's not. And so we need to come up with these strategies. And, and we'll do so. And I caution you, this is a precedent slide. We did not draw it for this particular location, but I want to show you how, you know, these side roads might meet the Pike. So look at, you know, now, we need islands in the middle, some type of island. They are not going to be as big as these. But when you take five lanes of traffic and you create a safety zone in the middle, it's not hard for most everyone to get across two lanes of traffic with a red light. And you can make it. And, but, and again, we need to clearly demarcate that pedestrians will be crossing along the street. And this is the, this is how much that, in a way that you really want to do that. And that is something that we will be discussing. These are part of the strategies. This is a county road and, and we, we understand what we're talking about. But it's still important. That's how we have to really work forward on this. Next slide. And again, you know, internal street meets the park. So again, you know, even though you've got this amazing park, highly programmed, great, voted the greatest asset by the community, we're also thinking about internal, you know, gathering spaces, community spaces. As someone said, and we always like to say, a place where you put your Christmas tree, you know, your 40-foot tall Christmas tree. And, and a place where, you know, events can occur and the community can come together. So this will be an important part of it. It's also, as we keep saying, you know, we have to understand how those cost, how you support that type of development. Because those are the amenities that attract the developers, that attract the residents, attract the community. And it's our job to figure out how you do so in a way that makes financial sense. Next slide. And again, you know, as I said in the beginning, maybe we don't get the north side of Delhi Pike to work. Let's take a look at the Remke site and, you know, one property owner. And what could that possibly be? We anchored it with a multiplex. I would like to say it right now. You know, we'd have to understand if that's viable. That may not be. 60,000's strong, but that's, you know, they, they may have their own numbers. But an idea that we're working through right now. Next slide. And it's looking into this where you can flank it by residential, create again, space for the community to come together. And at the end, and behind, you know, significant parking, and there's a grade change on this property too. So there actually is probably a fairly inexpensive way to tuck away some of the parking in a scenario like this or this property that could be attractive. If you can make grade work to your advantage, all the better. And that is a, you know, a highly viable development opportunity that takes up a good portion of the market that we are discovering is available here. And this will essentially end with some of the phasing, you know, building off, you know, to the west along the Pike. Next slide. And again, Delfair. And you know, we, it's easy to look here. You know, we're going after areas that we think we can really make an impact. If you can look at the, you know, between Delfair and Remke that we have not addressed, there's still probably real opportunities that we could pull this together. And some of those properties are fairly large. And if the, if this is succeeding, if we are really hitting development and developments increasing and the environment has changed so much, that, that could likely be an area that would likely change. We'll have, it's an example of a future land use map that we'll include with this plan. We will likely say, you know, this should be considered. It would increase value. But again, we always caution, those are, you know, homes and businesses are something that we are, you know, we hold in high, high regard. And you know, we want to make sure that, you know, this evolves with the community in mind, you know, with us developing this. And you know, again, if, if the markets rise to the value that residents, you know, benefit and make those decisions, that could be an opportunity and would likely be identified by us as a longer-term, you know, opportunity. And you know, that is where we are. Next slide. Townhouse development. I think we end on this. An example of, you know, the market shows about 30 to 40 townhouses in the next three to four years. That could be a perfect example of a type of development that is not mixed use and a great way to connect to the single family residential neighborhoods. And again, going back to how do we design this so that the developers use this plan? That's an example of connectivity as much as providing a different choice of housing for the community. So right, just within that, it's hitting two goals. That could be sustainable infrastructure underneath those sidewalks. Those are the tools that we'll be using tomorrow night. And this is, you know, we are, as I've said, we're, we're working, working, working. Nothing is finished. That, that, all I can say is we won't finish anything by tomorrow night. But what you will see if you come are a number of different scenarios with that three-dimensional model. And, and really, you'll see the process we've gone through. And it's just another opportunity to come in, talk about the vision statement. Let us know what you think. I'm already revising it on what we heard last night. If we hear more, we'll still revise it. But it's really just a way for the community to share, understand, see what we're doing, see how we've done it, see why we've done it. And then provide their input again on, are we hitting it the right way? Or are there concerns that we want to still continue to address? And with that, I'll open up to questions, but I've probably taken too long already.
You're fine.
Okay.
No, I was there last night, this afternoon. I think I'm, I'm pretty well-versed right now. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.